Well, welcome to the Board meeting of your Greeley-Evans schools. It's Monday, October 22nd, 2018. This meeting will now come to order. Will you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Concentrating on getting in my chair, I forgot the words. Welcome to everyone. Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt.
Present.
Mr. Hayfley.
Present.
Mr. Lydiak.
Present.
Mr. Matthews.
Present.
Ms. Pappas.
Present.
Dr. Richard.
Present.
Mrs. Solis.
Present.
Seven members present.
That's great, thank you. Certainly from the standpoint of the Board of Education President announcements, the only key component for us for the foreseeable near future would be to have parents and residents of the communities of Greeley and Evans vote. In Chicago, it was vote early and often, but here, we just want you to vote the one time, but certainly review your blue books and review the information available to you. You will hear a little bit of a discussion about a couple of specific items, numbers 73 and 112 this evening, but do vote. The impact on your students is significant. Thank you. The next item is the hearing of persons desiring to speak before the Board of Education, and I don't see anyone wishing to do so tonight. The next item is, Ms. Crane, the work session report, please.
Board of Education President Roger DeWitt began the work session with comments and updates from board members, and then proceeded to review the calendar of upcoming events and future agenda items. The Board discussed the appointment process for the anticipated board vacancy. Assistant Superintendent of Academic Achievement, Dr. Stacy Dattery, provided an update on Meeker Elementary Schools Priority Improvement Plan. The Board discussed their community engagement plan, and that concluded the work session.
So that's what this Board did for a couple hours before we all got dressed up to come down here for this public presentation, and it sounds like that's exactly what we did. Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Pilch, President's Report, please. If you don't mind Superintendent's Report.
I can, I'll do the President's.
One job at a time, please.
All right. My pleasure. You threw me off, sir. Let me get back over there. And I don't, I, it's a brief report this evening because I get to talk a little bit later about the most exciting piece of the evening, which is the recognition of the Colorado Councilor of the Year, Bethany Baldorama. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about her a little bit later, but she's here in the audience. I do want to talk just a moment, if I may, about our anticipated board vacancy.
Please.
So, Mr. DeWitt, our Board Chair, has decided that it's time for him to retire and step down from our Board of Education. He has not yet officially resigned, but we do anticipate his resignation in the next several weeks. And so we have posted on our website information for folks who might be interested in applying to take a position as a Board Member on our Board of Education. And so the way the process works is the candidate must fulfill, candidates interested must fulfill some application materials, provide a letter of interest, and a resume, and we have an orientation planned on November 1st for interested folks. Really, there's only, well, I'm gonna say three requirements. Two required by law, one required by all of us. So the first two that are required by law is that you have been a citizen and a registered voter in the school district for the previous 12 months. And the second being that you clear a background check, that you do not have any crimes against children. Now, the other requirement that we have is that you join us in moving, continuing to move our school district forward and the full implementation of our district strategic plan, Innovation 2020, and that you have a genuine heart and head for the children in the Greeley and Evans communities, and a genuine desire to serve those families and the children who we have here in District 6. So it's a great job. It doesn't pay anything, and it requires you to do a lot of work, no, but it is a great job, and it's an important job. Who we have as school Board Members is very important, and so we hope to have some applicants, and we'll work through a process where the Board will conduct interviews on November 30th of those folks who apply, with those folks who apply, and then the intent is to make a decision by the December 10th Board Meeting, at which time we will accept Mr. DeWitt's resignation. The Board will accept his resignation that evening is the plan, and then vote on the new future Board Member to come and join the Board on that evening. So I, you know, we will say a lot more about this over the weeks to come, but we are, we are very sad to see Mr. DeWitt leave our Board and to leave as our Board President, and we are so grateful for his service, and I especially am grateful, as he was the Board President, when I was hired four years ago to come on as your Superintendent of Schools. And he worked very hard to get me here and to keep me engaged as our attorneys were, you know, doing what attorneys do and taking time to figure out my entry plan and my contract. And so I will, I will forever be indebted to Mr. DeWitt for that, and I'm very sad to see him leave, but honor and respect his decision that he thinks he needs to behave as a retired person going forward. So we're going to let him do that, and we're glad to have him with us here tonight, and we'll continue to work cooperatively to fill his seat. The Board will need to come together and elect a new Board President. The term for the new position will be just one year until next November, so even a little less than a year, at which time we have another biennial election. So by law, that seat will open up for two years because that's what the time that Mr. DeWitt has left in his seat. So the candidate who is selected may choose to not run, they may choose to run for the two-year seat, or they may choose to run for one of the three, four-year seats that we will have open in November of 2019. So we'll cover all of this in that November 1st orientation, and certainly if you have questions, do not hesitate to reach out to Ms. Crane, our Executive Assistant for our Board of Education. I want to announce that tomorrow, we have a State of Education event at the Doubletree. The Greeley Chamber of Commerce has been gracious enough to offer and host a State of K-12 education event. Dr. Katie Anthes, the State Commissioner of Education, will be here to talk about the statewide, kind of the lay of the land statewide in education, and then I'll have an opportunity to give an update on District 6. This is the first opportunity for me to do this since I have come to the districts. I'm really excited about it. I do think tickets are still available, but you'd probably have to call the Chamber Office first thing in the morning to get a ticket, to get in if you wanted to. And then finally, I wanted to just touch briefly on transportation. I know we had a few parents and community members here in front of us a couple of Board Meetings ago talking about concerns with transportation. I just want to assure you, we're working with individuals to identify what the issues are. At the end of the day, it does seem that some of those elementary routes and middle school routes that we have not yet reinstated because we don't have drivers, and we, we're in better shape than we've ever been, as I've said before, with drivers, so instead of being down a couple dozen drivers, we are still down about a dozen drivers in District 6. And what that means is we have about eight routes that have not yet been re-implemented at elementary and middle level, which is what we promised to do with the mill levy override, was reinstate those elementary and middle level routes. And as we're able to hire drivers, we'll keep adding routes back in. And we are, we are taking applications every single day and interviewing every week for drivers. It takes about four to six weeks for a driver to actually be behind the wheel by the time they clear training, get their CDL, and, and their background check. But we're still hiring, and as soon as we hire, we'll get them, we'll get them in a route and reimplement a route. I just want to remind everyone that high school transportation dramatically shifted because of the shift in start times for high school. So in allowing us to move to a later start time at high school, we eliminated our ability to use our bus fleet to transport those high school students as we have in the past. We are running shuttles, District 6 shuttles, from east to west and west to east, east for each high school, so we're working with families to identify if, if there's a shuttle bus that they can get to and, and help to get their high schooler to school. The City of Greeley, with those quality-of-life tax dollars, they continue to support us with bus passes for all of our students, and a lot of our students, especially high school age, are using City of Bus transportation, so, or City of Greeley bus transportation. So I just wanted to update you all on that and let you know that we're on it, we're gonna continue to work at it and continue to work with the community. We'll probably be offering some informational sessions around the district at the secondary level, especially where we can help parents to better navigate the transportation for their high schoolers. Much of, it seems, most of the issues at elementary and middle are about those routes we've not been able to reinstate, or they didn't ever have a bus route and they just wish they had one. And, you know, we, our walk distances are such that if you live within a mile of your school at the elementary, even once all those routes are reinstated, we're still not going to be providing transportation. So I'll keep you posted as more information becomes available.
Well, thanks for those updates. So we have some paid and an unpaid position available, you might say, in the district. So that's something for everybody. The next item is the approval of the agenda, and this is an action item. I'll be glad to accept a motion so that we can deal with this particular item. Motion.
I'll make the amendment after, after the.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second. There's some discussion.
Mr. DeWitt.
Please.
Mr. DeWitt, I would propose that we amend the agenda this evening and add for consideration the resolution regarding Proposition 112.
Yes. Sir, can I? All right, thank you. Moved and seconded. So we will act on the amendment for approval or disapproval, and then we will go back to the, the agenda item itself. Ms. Solis.
So I have a question. So the public wasn't notified that we were gonna be doing this?
Well, I think our procedure on this, and I'm listening to other people to answer, but procedure on this would be, we would need to do that if it were an executive session.
Okay.
And Mr. Lydiak, if there's something else in your mind to answer.
Just that it is within the purview of the Board of Education to bring forth additional items if they are timely, and as long as we have the vote to support that, then we can amend the agenda.
And all members present.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions? So we will act on the amendment as read by Mr. Lydiak. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, Ms. Crane, for the amendment.
Mr. DeWitt.
Aye.
Mr. Hayfley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
No.
Mrs. Solis.
No.
Motion carries, 5-2.
Thank you very much. So now we'll move to the approval of the agenda as amended.
Exactly.
And since moved and seconded, thank you very much. Discussion. Question as to placement of the resolution, at what location in the agenda we should place that?
Oh, it's up to the President's discretion.
Now, I am pretty indiscreet. May we place that as?
I would suggest, Mr. DeWitt, that we place it as the last item under special items.
Oh, all right.
As a possibility.
I was wondering if it would be placed on a Board priority, but that's fine, special.
All under Board priorities.
Okay.
Absolutely. Either would be great.
I hate to be the only one wrong here, so we'll, we'll apply that as number 7.03 under special items. Thanks for your patience, everyone. So, the next item is the consent agenda. That's an action item. I'll be glad, I'm sorry.
Put on the agenda.
Did we not already?
No.
Did not already on the, on the agenda?
Not on the amended agenda.
On the amended agenda. Roll call, Ms. Crane.
I'm gonna approve it. Mr. DeWitt.
Aye.
Mr. Hayfley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Mrs. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries, 7-0.
Thanks for carrying each other along here. The next item would be the consent agenda, and it is an action item, and I will accept the motion to consider this.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you both. Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt.
Aye.
Mr. Hayfley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Mrs. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries, 7-0.
Brilliant, thank you. Next item that makes us all smile is a recognition of Counselor of the Year, Bethany Baldorama. Dr. Pilch, do you want to take the helm?
I'm happy to, thank you. So I think, I think I'll just have Bethany come and join me at the podium and maybe talk a little bit about her so we can see her sweet face on camera while we do this.
Excellent.
So it is my pleasure to introduce to you all Bethany Baldorama, who is not only the High School Counselor of the Year, but who we recently learned is now the Colorado State Counselor of the Year.
Oh, my goodness.
I want to tell you just a little bit about Bethany. She came to Northridge High School in 2010 and has since dedicated her time there to really ensuring that the needs of every single student is met. And she has mentored and coached many of her colleagues, not only at Northridge, but throughout the district, and she's looked to by her colleagues as a leader, which is why they nominated her for this award, of course. But some of the things she's particularly had her fingerprint on are the implementation of a multi-tiered system of support that really ensures that they're intervening with students at really one of the most crucial times in their life, where they're making sure that every student has a plan for high school, graduation, and beyond. She has worked tirelessly to help students complete college applications and the financial aid form applications, and to make sure they have the information that they need to make the choices that they have to make for their life at such a critical time when they're getting ready to leave high school. She is a critical member of the team at Northridge High School, and we have seen, over these past few years especially, we have seen dramatic increases in graduation rates, declines in dropout rates, the student F rate has declined, the student pass rate has increased, we have an increased number of students in concurrent enrollment courses and, and in career pathways. And much of this is a credit to you, Bethany, and to your leadership at Northridge High School. We are so proud that you choose District 6 and that you are District 6, and we can't wait to support you as you go on to represent Colorado in the national competition for Counselor of the Year.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. (applause) Oh, yes.
Sure.
I'm looking photobombing. (laughter)
Yeah, I'll get in there. There you go.
Who's in charge?
Okay, ready?
And we love you, congratulations.
One, two, three. Great.
Oh, I saw that. That was playing us, basically. I always shoot for the, for the shoulders.
Thanks, Michael, I'm sorry.
Congratulations, thanks for coming.
Don't leave yet, Bethany. I'm gonna say a few more things about you, then you can leave. So I just want to remind everyone what a tremendous recognition this is. There are literally probably thousands of school counselors in the state of Colorado, and many of them work tirelessly and deserve recognition. And Bethany rose above them and was selected as Colorado Counselor of the Year. And you let us know how we can support you as you go on to compete nationally. We couldn't be more proud of you than we are. Congratulations again, Bethany.
And to be fair, Bethany and I were just chatting moments ago, and she said I couldn't have done it without everyone else. It's a, it's a team effort, and so she recognizes the circle that, that represents that support team for our students, and so I thought that was pretty cosmic as well. So congratulations. You're free to stay for the fun part of the show, or you might have some homework to do. Your choice. Thank you very much, and congrats. The next item is a recognition, a recognition of the District Evaluation Council, Dr. Pilch.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. We bring this to you as part of state law requirement, and we also are excited to introduce the folks to you who are with us tonight and who serve on the Evaluation Council. This is an important team in forming the work that we do around teacher evaluation in District 6. I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Overton, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, and let her talk to you a little bit about the Council and the membership of the Council.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Good evening, Mr. DeWitt and members of the Board. Tonight, I'm here to celebrate the work of the Evaluation Council, and their work exists to help support all of the things that happen around teacher evaluation, and they're very engaged and active in this work. Each year, the Board of Education approves the membership of this Council, and we have representatives from the community, we have representatives, one parent of a child attending McCullough, and teachers from all levels, principals from all levels, as well as district administration, the facilitators, our co-chairs are Aaron Snyder, our Greeley Education Association President, and Greg Hawking, one of our HR directors. Tonight, I'll ask Mr. DeWitt to come forward and recognize the five members who are present. Aaron Snyder. Ready to take a picture? I'm the last one. And Annette Overton.
(inaudible). Your photobomb. Well, the next item is, those of you with good recall have in mind, is the resolution. Doug, do you mind? Mr. Lydiak, do you mind making another motion? I was wondering about a motion, but.
We do need a motion first, Mr. DeWitt, so. I would move that we vote, reconsider the resolution in opposition to Proposition 112 this evening.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. I'll be glad to have some time for discussion, please, this evening.
Read it first, Dr.?
I'd be glad to go either way. I'd be glad to read it. The resolution of the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6, resolution in opposition to Proposition 112. Whereas the Weld County School District 6 Board of Education believes that every student should have the opportunity to reach his or her potential, full potential, and to participate meaningfully in the civic and economic life of the community, and whereas the Colorado way of life provides every student a chance to succeed regardless of their zip code or their learning needs, and whereas the quality of public education depends, develops a competitive workforce that will drive a vibrant Colorado economy for decades to come, and whereas the Weld County School District 6 Board of Education is committed to providing the highest quality, most effective, and safest facilities to educate the students in our district, and whereas public education funding in Colorado is already below the levels necessary to provide effective, high-quality education to students, requiring school districts, including Weld County School District 6, to eliminate programs and services and to defer necessary maintenance and upgrades to facilities, and whereas Colorado Public School Districts, including Weld County School District 6, are dependent on programs like the Building Excellence Schools Today, BEST program, grant program, to make necessary renovations, enhancements, and additions to educational facilities, and whereas the Colorado Land, Colorado State Land Board, whose mission is to manage an endowment of assets held in perpetual intergenerational public trusts for the financial benefit of Colorado's public schools and other public institutions, has provided $1.4 billion to Colorado Public Schools in the past 10 years, distributing half of its gross revenue to the BEST program, and whereas the Colorado State Land Board calculates that Proposition 112 will eliminate $230.3 million in funding for Colorado's schools from state land, trust lands, over a three-year period, reducing school funding from trust lands by 60 percent. And whereas Proposition 112 would have a severe and immediate negative impact on the available funding of BEST grants for school districts, including Weld County School District 6, and whereas the Weld County District 6 2018 estimated mill levy revenue from the oil and gas industry exceeds $22 million, and whereas the loss of oil and gas revenues to Weld County School District 6 would result in significant financial hardship, compromising programs, and servicing, services for students, and whereas the Weld County School District 6 Board of Education declares Proposition 112 to be a matter of official concern. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Weld County School District 6 Board of Education officially declares its opposition to Proposition 112 due to the severe negative risk to public education funding, adopted and approved if it so is on this night. Mr. Lydiak.
Mr. DeWitt, and members of the Board, I'll begin with saying that, you know, normally I do subscribe and support that the nonpartisan Board of Education should not take positions on legislation or amendments or items that are not directly affecting public education. But to me, there are so many grave concerns with 112, but I will definitely limit my, my issues and concerns with it in regards to public education. And it really does, I believe 112 is the exception because of its horrific impact and guaranteed negative effect on our funding in public education. And so, you know, in good conscience, I cannot not speak up in regards to 112, and so I will be voting in support of Proposition 112.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Solis.
So I have to say that I'm disappointed that we're taking action on this item without any public input. Looking at the city council meeting, there were several citizens that came forward, and it has been the, my experience on this Board, that we include public when it came to picking our superintendent, when it came to putting our 2020 plan. it came to picking our superintendent, when it came to putting our 2020 plan together and getting others' opinions before we made this decision. So I am disheartened that we are going this route in putting that for a vote today. I can tell you that people have pushed us to take a stand on this, and I can honestly tell you, I didn't know where I was going to be on this. I have gone back and forth, back and forth, and this has been a heart-wrenching process to go through. I can tell you what I am disappointed about is that this comes forward because of the lack of conversation, the lack of citizens' ability to really have a voice when it comes to oil and gas, and we've seen that with the Bella Romero situation. We are the poster child for why people brought this to the ballot. Our kiddos at Bella Romero, those neighborhoods, those families, are a poster child for why people brought this forward, and that's disappointing. I got information over the last couple of days, one was from the Colorado State Land Board, and the numbers are staggering. It's a lot of money. I'm not going to deny that. It is scary for me to think as a school district, we're depending on money coming from an industry that puts so much money into campaigns, in legislation, in canceling legislation, things that could protect community members, that community members have really pushed their legislators to bring forward, and that's concerning. On the information from the Colorado State Land Board, one of the things that it said on there was that trust lands are assessed for stewardship stipulations. And what those are, there's two primary ones. Time limitations, which are seasonal restrictions on oil and gas operations to protect wildlife. And now we're talking about our children. Where are the steward stipulations for our kids? I'm amazed that these kind of things are put in place for animals, but when it comes to family, humans, and kiddos, where is that? The second one is surface setbacks. The agency evaluates each parcel of land prior to issuing an oil and gas lease and puts in place location-specific setbacks or no surface occupancy stipulations as needed. Those are great. Community members have been fighting for these in public areas. We've seen here in our community when an oil situation wanted to be put up by a charter school, next to a charter school, and those families fought it, and it didn't end up there. Then we look at Bella Romero, which is on the east side of Greeley, where you have a lot of monolingual Spanish speakers and a lot of poverty, and it's there. That is concerning for me as a community member, as a mom, as a school board member. That is concerning to me. Then in the process, I came across an article that just came out on October 17th, or October 19th of this year, and it was from High Country News, and the title is "When Your Neighborhood Goes Boom," and it's about the Windsor explosion. And there's a lot of information in here that wasn't shared before. You know, the dispatcher's tone scrambled rural fire workers were accustomed to grass fires and grass accidents, more so than explosion by hydrocarbon. Our local facilities, a lot of our local fire departments don't have the resources or the equipment to handle some of these situations when they happen. This whole article talks about the process when it happened in Windsor, the aftermath, the information that didn't come out. They just released the dispatch conversations that weren't available to the public before. This stuff is concerning, and this is in Windsor. This is very close to us. So in hearing the information, and I hear the dollars, and I hear oil and gas keep telling us that they are part of our community and they participate in our community and they give money, which is totally true, and I have not forgotten or looked over that for many families, this puts food on their table. I get that. But there has to be a point where we determine as a community, how do we take care of our community members and not be held hostage by certain entities in our community and do the right thing? What really made me sad is that in this whole conversation, we haven't had people from the oil and gas say, you know what, we don't think this is the right legislation to put forward. We're asking for you to be against it, but we have not listened well enough to community members that this even got this far. The fact that this is on the ballot is because those conversations have not been had, and people were getting frustrated and didn't feel like they had power, and that's why we're here. So after reading this article, after having numerous conversations with community members, I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Pappas.
So, thank you, Rhonda. I can't begin to be as articulate or as passionate as Rhonda is, but I will say that I agree with everything that she has said, and I feel like I have, I would agree. This is a complex issue. I have been at the COGCC meeting here in Greeley where people spoke about the concerns they had about oil and gas wells next to their homes, next to their schools. We were part of the Bella Romero facility. There's nothing I can say other than I agree with Rhonda and support Rhonda's statements. And I would also say that I understand that this will have a financial impact on our schools. I do understand that. And I do understand and know that we do not have enough funding for public education. We have been getting money from oil and gas, there's no doubt, but we still do not have enough funding for education. We don't have enough. We don't have enough money to put into public education. There is the fear that this is going to take money away, but even if 112 does not pass, we still are not going to have enough money for funding. And what will happen is that we then have, in my opinion, then we have not compromised, we have not faced this complex issue, and we go back to having, I don't know how many wells, but I have heard a number of 70,000 wells in the state of Colorado with not enough personnel to even have oversight over those wells. And if you take the time to read the article that Rhonda has brought to your attention tonight, you can see that that was a shocking event and maybe not prepared for in the way that it should have been. So I am just going to tell you that I am not going to support this resolution for that reason, but also in the resolution, it says, "Whereas the Weld County School District Six Board of Education is committed to providing the highest quality, most effective, and safest facilities to educate the students in our district," and I do not believe that this will support the safest facilities in our district. So I appreciate that it's complex. I appreciate that it is, that oil and gas provides jobs. I have family members that work in the oil and gas industry, but I believe this is the, that the setback is one way of trying to get voices listened to and heard. So I too will not be supporting this resolution tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Haley.
I agree with Ms. Solis in that I don't think either side listened to each other very well. And I think that hopefully through this incredibly challenging conversation that ultimately they will. I find this legislation poorly written. I find that the setback is too great. I would be happier with a smaller one and be much more comfortable with that. And my hope is that people listen to the challenging conversations that occur as we move forward. I will vote yes on this resolution this evening.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Mr. Matthews.
I do agree with so much of what Ms. Solis says, but at the end of the day, I do think this is about our funding. And Ms. Pappas is right. If, you know, even if, regardless of what happens with this proposition, it won't be enough funding. But when we say that, that fifth whereas, that funding in Colorado is already below levels necessary to provide effective, high-quality education to students, that doesn't even begin to tell the story. And our voters voted $14 million a year ago, and we're so thankful, we can't say it enough for that money, but it was, we were desperate for it because we're down $177 million. And we really cannot lose anymore. This is our counselors that we're talking about, our teachers that we're talking about, roofs on our buildings, this BEST grant that this funds. It is maintenance and new buildings for us. And when we look at which, what best serves our kids, the majority of our kids, I do think that they are best served by protecting their funding. And so I will be voting for the proposition, or for the resolution, in opposition to the proposition.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Richard, please.
Through my initial vote that I did not want the agenda amended, I find that this is an inappropriate matter for us to be taking a resolution on. However, that has passed and it's the will of the board that it will come before us. I sit here tonight and I really am in the position of an elected official on behalf of the students of this district. And it is only because of the severe negative risk to public education funding that I'll be voting in support of this.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments from board members? Ms. Pappas.
Actually, yes. So I would like to say that there is some misconception, and I don't know if this is the right place to say this or not, but there is some misconception that if this proposition does pass or does not pass, that that will be enough funding for education. And so there is some confusion about Amendment 73 and Proposition 112. And some of the advertising that is in place right now would make you believe that Amendment 73 is not important because we will get enough funding from this gas and oil revenue. So I would just encourage voters to understand that even if this does not pass, this is not enough revenue, this is not enough for us to fund our public education in the state of Colorado. So do your research, understand that, and I just wanted to bring that up as a clarification.
Thank you very much. It's totally appropriate. Thank you. Ms. Solis.
Just a couple more things from the article. So as Colorado's population has increased from 4.3 million to more than 5.6 million since 1999, the number of active oil and gas wells over the same period of time has increased from less than 22,000 to almost 55,000 today. That is 150% increase. 150% increase. There's also been Andarko shareholders that filed a class action lawsuit last year claiming that the company's Colorado operations were a ticking time bomb. We really, as a state, as a community, as a county, really need to look at regulations and what's going on if this doesn't pass. We need to have a really serious conversation and sit down and get the right people at the table and have this conversation to make sure that we are working well together, that we are doing things back and forth and supporting one another. So I really encourage community members, along with Teri Pappas, to really do your research, find out the information, and make sure you vote.
Thank you, ma'am. It should be clear to anybody who has been paying attention to this that we have seen really a remarkable degree of tone deafness on the part of the drilling community. And the placement of the wells near Bella Romero, our school, is a great example of that tone deafness under the circumstances. And though the companies have been willing to work to a small degree with the district in terms of minimizing the impact that we expressed was most concerning, I do want to go back to February to remind people, we talked about a 2,000-foot limit. This particular Proposition 112 refers to rivers and lakes and bodies of water and makes the positioning of drilling operation all virtually impossible. And I think that that's, maybe if your intent is to completely abnegate drilling in the state of Colorado, that probably would take care of it. But those people drive to get to this meeting, and they drive back home, and they drive their kids to school. And so I'm in a position of saying that notion of abnegating drilling in the state of Colorado because we're mad at them and because they have been ruinously deaf to our concerns is probably a little bit of overkill. And so I'm certainly going to be voting in favor of this resolution, not because I'm a thrilling oil and gas fellow, but because I think that the effort to completely remove oil and gas is untenable at this time. It is property that is owned by people and they have a legal right to access it. But we are concerned about the safety of our kids, and there is nobody leaving this room without paying attention to the fact that we need to learn the lessons from previous fire experiences and explosions. And this board has shown that it is sensitive by making a public statement that was hugely unpopular in some circles because we said we put a limit that said that Bella is not the right place for this kind of event. And at the same time, I fielded phone calls from conservative groups who said, you guys are really weasels. You should have demanded more footage distance. We're never going to be successful in pleasing individuals. Our goal is to make sure that our kids are funded and to the degree possible, completely held safe. And I think that at the end of the day, we're all voting for that. Ms. Crane, roll call, please.
Mr. DeWitt.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
No.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
No.
Motion carries 5-2.
Deep breath. Thank you very much, everyone. The next item on the agenda is a board priority, and it is the Council of Student Representatives report. Dr. Pilch, do you mind introducing or bringing up our colleagues?
Come on up. Come on up.
Come on down and introduce yourselves to this dangerous group.
We'll just let you all take it away from here.
We're all friends now. I promise.
Hi, I'm Erica Horning. I've been on the board for two years, and I'm a junior at Northridge. So I'm going to give you guys an update about what we've been talking about at the meetings. To start off with, we have a talent show coming up this Friday, and we've been organizing and doing the logistics on how to plausibly get it together in a short amount of time. We've also been talking about our Weld-Meld integration. Weld-Meld is a project we started about three years ago, which it brings students around the district who didn't get the pleasure to be on the board of student reps. They get to still participate in our activities by getting kids together and advertising for us, which is really nice because it brings the district more together. We've also been talking about the strengths in each school that we have that makes District Six unique, and it just displays all the diversity we have, which is great. Another thing I'm here to update you about is to thank you for showing up to auditions, those who did, on behalf of the board. Auditions are done as the talent show is this week. So I'm going to hand it over to Hayden.
And did I make, did I make the audition? Am I in?
Yes.
Oh, great.
Oh, now you're set on the spot.
Hi, I'm Hayden Busha, and I'm also a junior at Northridge High School. I'm just going to be branching off on what Erica said about the talent show. We're just kind of inviting everyone here to come to the District Student Council. Kind of, we're hosting it, I guess, obviously. The talent show, welcome anyone in the district. It's going to be this Friday, October 26th, excuse me, at 7:00 PM in the Northridge High School auditorium. The proceeds and kind of the main reason we're doing this event is not only to bring the district together, but also to have all the proceeds go to an organization kind of like, it's called Operation Christmas, which brings underprivileged children or people who just can't get gifts, toys and gifts for Christmas. In admission to this event, we have the availability of either giving $5 or you can bring wrapping paper or a toy that you'd like to donate to go towards these kids. That's kind of all I have to say about that.
That's all we have.
Well, I've had a chance to see your work, and we've had a chance as a group to see you guys, you know, really build a strong organization, and you represent each one of the high schools in the district, charter and non-charter, and so we're grateful for the work you put in. The salary is a little, yeah, okay, but thanks for your efforts. We appreciate your work. Thanks for coming tonight, too.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guess you're going to go do your homework instead of seeing the rest of the show, right? Okay, smart move. The next item is first read of policy JLCDB, Administration of Medical Marijuana to Qualified Students. Dr. Pilch, people are moving up toward the TV at home to be sure they're hearing what I just said.
So what you have before you is the first read of our proposal for a policy around the distribution of medical marijuana. We, our legislators, have ruled and made a decision that school districts will authorize the distribution of medical marijuana. We do have some flexibility in how we do that. We've taken the most conservative approach where allowable by law, which is to recommend by policy that parents will have the right to come into the school to administer the medical marijuana to their child. The policy clearly describes the location which that may be done, clearly describes what is permissible under the terms of medical marijuana. Also, it defines that it must be administered by the primary caregiver. What, the language is clear about how that is determined, and under the, no circumstance would staff be the one to administer the medical marijuana unless that staff member is the parent or primary caregiver of the child who is receiving the medical marijuana. And then there's also criteria for what identifies a student as qualified to receive medical marijuana. So there will be a requirement similar to what is required for any medical distribution in the school district, whereas a doctor is identifying that there's a need for that medicine and that that medicine may be delivered to that student. This is the first read. It's the policy recommended by our Colorado School Boards Association. I'm happy to take questions you might have.
Mr. Lydiak?
Just a quick question. Isn't it usually THC-free or reduced, and just the CBD medical?
No.
I'm sorry. Mr. Lydiak?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was not speaking into the microphone. Is it usually the reduced, like the CBD oil or the THC, or is it really open to any?
No, this is medical marijuana, and so it may just be the CBD oil with, that does not have high levels of THC, but this does include edibles as well. And so presumably, there's a medical professional at the other end of this that is making the recommendation for what the student is to receive, but...
But my understanding is that it is primarily for the medical-grade CBD oils and such, but yet, but yet this doesn't protect against any level. But it's still not in line with, yeah, with federal, which the Colorado Association of School Boards has taken a resolution on trying to urge our federal laws to at least support or be in line with state laws. But it does put the district in a difficult situation, is what I'm trying to say.
It does. Other comments, questions? I noticed in the review that you, that we all had the opportunity to do, that if the federal government makes a quick decision to act on the state of Colorado in some way, we would restrict this immediately. And it seems to me, as this came, became a reality to most of us who've been in school board meetings, this is not something that most school boards have looked forward to, but it seems the most benign approach that we could take.
Yes.
And it's the one that causes perhaps least immediate impact on staff. I was curious about whether I could come in as a dad and say, "This is my son, and he's coming to the school, and by the way, here, he needs this, and here's my permission slip." And as long as they're fulfilling their obligation as the primary care provider, then it looks like that's a system that the district is willing to work with, and obviously, we would listen to any problems that you ran into along the way.
Yeah. A student qualifies for distribution, for receiving medical marijuana in a school setting by the primary caregiver by holding a valid registration with the state of Colorado, which is a license issued by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment.
Any comments else? Thank you very much for the information. We'll see this again. The next item includes revisions to E, Support Services Policy and Regulation. It's an action item. I'd be glad to hear a motion so that we can discuss it.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the revisions to Regulation EEAEAA-R, Drug and Alcohol Testing for Bus Drivers and Policy EEAG, Student Transportation in Private Vehicles as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Dr. Pilch?
Thank you. Again, we're enacting policy based on new requirements under Colorado law. The substantive change in this is really just one sentence and one word, and that is the addition of opioids. And then it includes a definition of opioids that are referenced in, now in the policy that previously was not in our policy, and so that has been added. And then the shells have been changed to wills as recommended by law. And then the second policy that you are considering comes to us through recommendations with our Colorado School Boards Association. It's just a cleanup of language around student transportation and adults transporting students.
Well, we've had the opportunity to review these items. We've moved and seconded, unless there's comment or a question. Mr. Haley?
I appreciate you taking the second one, but my question would be is, in an exceptional case, and I know that when I was coaching tennis a long time ago, for academic reasons, we chose to transport our own, our students' athletes in vans, and there was a process for us to get licensing. Is that still a possibility for people to do that?
Yes, it is. It is. And so what we've changed, rather than it being the principal's decision to make exceptions, that it's a superintendent's or my designee, so the idea would be that somebody up here isn't involved, an assistant superintendent or the district athletic director, rather than a principal feeling like they're on their own to make that decision. But yes, absolutely still available.
Okay, thank you.
Great point. Seeing no other interest in conversation here on this particular topic, roll call, Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is a second read and adoption of policy GCHA/GCHB, Mentor Teachers and Administrators. Dr. Pilch, we did discuss this, and I'll grab a motion here in a second. We will require a motion to be able to discuss this.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six adopts policy GCHA/GCHB, Mentor Teachers, Administrators as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Dr. Pilch?
I'll just remind you that this policy, as well as the next policy that you will consider, GCHC, both are a result of the work that has gone on statewide around teacher retention and new legislation around what school districts should have in place to retain and support teachers, around teacher induction and mentoring teachers. Much of this, we've already had in place here in District Six, but this codifies it in policy per state law.
Comments from board members? We did have a chance to read and discuss and ask questions previous moment. Roll call, Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, ma'am. As Dr. Pilch mentioned, this is not new, this next one, second read and adoption of policy GCHC, Professional Staff Induction Program, bringing students, teachers into the workaday world, a more and more master teacher. I'd be glad to accept a motion for discussion of this topic.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six adopts policy GCHC, Professional Staff Induction Program as presented.
Second. Thank you, all three. Comments or discussion? One of the things I think we expressed concern about is a meaningful way to say thank you to our mentor teachers, Dr. Pilch, and while there's not necessarily any surplus stipend coming from the state to see this happens, we'd probably be glad to hear any updates on how this program might develop in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Brilliant. Next item, second read, adoption of policy KDBA, Parent Notification of Employee Criminal Charges. We've had the opportunity to look at this situation, and so it's time to act on it with a motion, please.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six adopts policy KDBA, Parent Notification of Employee Criminal Charges as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, please.
Just a reminder that this policy, too, comes to us as a result of recent state legislation and is a requirement that we have such policy in place, which would require us to notify parents of children if we have an employee who we become aware of who has been charged with those specified offenses that are listed in the policy, primarily those crimes against children.
And it is not our obligation to search and discover activities or malfeasance on the part of teachers. It's simply that when we are informed, then we would carry that information forward.
Yes, and we typically do, Mr. Dewitt, now as a practice. The change for this will mean that we will need to take a look at students who might have had interactions with that staff member within the previous 12 months.
12 months, okay. Other comments, questions? Roll call, Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Pilch is going to provide us with some information associated with Innovation 2020, Climate and Culture, Priority Two, Safe Schools. And there are some gentlemen working their way toward the podium. Dr. Pilch, thanks for doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Dewitt. So as part of our updates on our strategic plan goals, Innovation 2020, we bring you tonight one of our areas of climate and culture, and specifically the data that we are measuring under that goal area around safe schools. So I'll pass it now to Chief of Safety and Security, John Gates, and Assistant Superintendent of Support Services, Kent Henson.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Good evening. Kent and I are pleased to be with you this evening to provide an update with regard to safe schools consistent with Innovation 2020. Our mission and vision, just as a matter of summary, and mission is District Six provides every student with a personalized, well-rounded, and excellent education in a safe, caring environment. And as you know full well, our vision is that District Six educates today's students in partnership with families and communities to succeed in tomorrow's world. Pertinent to this evening's presentation, we ensure safe and healthy schools. The four goals of Innovation 2020, which you're also well aware of. The goal we're addressing this evening is climate and culture, and that says we will cultivate a safe and supportive learning environment for all, embracing our diversity, honoring and engaging all stakeholders, and promoting safety. Priority two is to provide a safe school environment, including physical, social, and emotional well-being for all. And under that, objective one is to ensure all schools have communication systems and line-of-sight entrance whenever feasible.
So the installation of security cameras will decrease disciplinary incidents in schools, allow for remote monitoring of ingress and egress points, entrances and exits, and allow for more remote monitoring of all common areas. Last summer, we completed Phase One of the security camera installation at these four schools, so the four main high schools, and implemented were 268 camera heads divided amongst these buildings. There's a picture of a camera head. It's not real exciting. Kids sure know they're there. But the reason that we say camera head is that each head is different depending on where it's located. So a head may contain one, two, three, or four cameras. If it's in the middle of the hallway, it might have four if it's at a T. So there were 268 camera heads installed at those four schools this summer, and we're in the process of beginning with Phase Two. There was an RFP meeting today on this, and our hope is to begin the installation as soon as product comes in for another 200 camera heads at these middle schools. And that would be finishing Prairie Heights, which was already begun a year ago.
As for measurements, I had anecdotal data based on feedback from administrators and campus security officers that they believed there was a significant difference in our disciplinary incidents in high school. And I was certainly hopeful that that was the case, and a review of high school discipline data for three consecutive years, year-to-date, did in fact denote a 31% decrease in disciplinary referrals this year. So whereas certainly there are many factors that can impact discipline, I think it's safe to say that the security cameras have had a really positive impact as we attempt to reduce disciplinary referrals and enhance learning. And it just, while I'm onto anecdotal data, I was at Greeley West High School about three weeks ago talking to my security personnel, and there's a young man at Greeley West that has had a little bit of trouble staying out of trouble, and commented to Rudy, one of my security officers out there, that, "My goodness, you must have about 400 cameras in here," to which Rudy appropriately said, "Yes, yes, that's correct." Secure entry, we've been able to accomplish that partially because of some addition with MLO funds, but the idea behind this was to reduce the number of doors open at high schools. Main entrances were designated and monitored by security personnel. As you're all aware, you had approved quite some time ago the Aphone system for all the elementary K8s in the middle schools, which, as a matter of summary, would dictate that when anybody walked up to our schools that wasn't a district employee that could badge their way in or a board member, that they would ring a buzzer and then be on closed-circuit camera insights. Not to be obstructionist, but simply to identify those that are coming into our buildings and identify that maybe few percent that aren't parents that our staff doesn't know. I've lost a lot of sleep over the years about the fact that those weren't particularly applicable to high school environments. We're actually piloting one at Northridge High, which will be, hope to be in place by second semester, but the additional campus security officer at Greeley West, Greeley Central, and Northridge has allowed us now to staff all the doors that are open with security personnel and still have ample security personnel to cover the rest of the school and meet the needs of the administrators. And then because they, in fact, have a lot of idle time at their post, we have provided them with laptops, and they are, in fact, monitoring the security cameras so they can see. Primarily, their concern is who's approaching, who's on the outside of the building from the peripheral cameras, but it's also had a good effect in monitoring activity with inside the school as well. Use of security cameras has been previously addressed. Badging for secure entrances, we have a system as part of the MLO process that, which has one enhanced our badging so that Kent's personnel don't have to go to each site to activate badges. That has been quite cumbersome. And then secondly, Kent, I just hit a button there and took us forward to thank you, and we're not quite there yet. Thank you. Also is going to allow electronic locks at many of our doors in the building, and that's, while that's a relatively slow process, it's ongoing, and it's making our district safer each day. Finally, a system that I believe you're aware of called Raptor, that is a visitor volunteer management system... management system that the district is a part of now, again, partially due to the gratitude of those that voted for the MLO. And essentially, what this does when a person enters our schools, this is active at all of our sites, is you give them a driver's license or a state-issued ID. It goes into the system, and it's used as an identifier for sex offenders. We obviously prefer that sex offenders not be in our buildings, and it allows us to screen those and then get the answers to some more questions should that occur. Considering that most are not sex offenders, there's an adhesive badge that's printed out that has a picture of the individual that presented the ID and the location in the building which they're going to, which can easily be affixed to their clothing, and we feel like that then we've vetted them and we've enhanced the safety of our students and our staff. That really has three components. We're phasing it in phases. The second is a drill manager component where we have a pilot group now. They are actually doing drills in their building, and it's all being done by their phones or a mobile device that allows that information to come to me and subsequently the police or other administrators as to the safety of the classrooms, whether everybody's accounted for. And we'll move the entire district that. And then the third and final component of Raptor, which will phase in second semester, is a reunification system, which will give us a more enhanced system to reunify either one school or a block of schools, as that would be applicable in the event of emergency where we have to evacuate. That is all that we had this evening and would be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Can I add one thing?
Certainly.
Before I go. I've been doing this a long time, and the use of cameras in schools definitely is preventative when kids know they're. It also helps you react to situations, you know, that happen that are unfortunate and definitely adds to the overall safety of our campus. But it only works in conjunction with, you saw our counselor was honored here tonight, in having a strong MTSS, you know, presence in our schools. That also helps to prevent, you know, a lot of the discipline things that happens in schools, and so this is a huge piece of technology, and Jen's done a great job with this. But, you know, you sometimes have to remember, there's more than one leg on a stool, and this is definitely a great support for our principals and our security staff in helping to make our schools a safe place.
Okay. Well, thank you both. Don't go anywhere. There could be a question. The panel is lighting up. I knew there might be one. Mr. Lydiak, please.
Again, Mr. Gates, and you touched on this very quickly in your presentation of each of the elements, but I kept hearing that key, you know, phrase or initials, MLO, so we're just still so grateful to be able to expand on these services and the safety features for our students here because of that MLO, so.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know if it's a question or just a comment to definitely emphasize that.
And I would just follow up by saying that the superintendent and the Board of Education committed that a percentage of those funds would go to school safety and security, and as the one that has implemented most of that, I can tell you that the district has certainly lived up to their bargain.
Ms. Pappas.
I may have missed this, but did you say that Raptor is at all the schools or will is going to be at all the schools?
It is at all the schools right now and functioning.
Okay, thank you.
I was lost a little bit about Jeff Jr., Jefferson Jr., is that fish or fowl? Where, what phase of camera would we be looking at serving them?
We'll be in the third phase.
Okay.
They are currently locked down with an Aphone. They'll be in the third phase of the camera implementation, and they, too, are a Raptor site.
Okay. Thank you for that. Just didn't have a place in my head with that information. Anything else? Well, we certainly thank you, and it's a thrill to see this already in operation and see the money going to the right things.
We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, we're pleased to serve as your school board. This meeting is adjourned.